Thank you for coming out tonight. Got some decent weather for a commission meeting, although we're indoors, better than some of our past meetings. All right, it's 7:30, so I'm gonna call the Royal Oak City Commission meeting for November 25th, 2019 to order. We're gonna begin tonight with a special invocation given by Reverend Preston Boyd. Please stand if you can.
Heavenly Father, on this evening, we come before you, asking for blessings for these men and women who offered themselves for government service and were elected by the citizens of Royal Oak. Public service places great demands on those who choose to serve. These demands are great, so we ask in humbleness for your divine guidance over this body of officials, to allow them to effectively serve in this 50th city commission session. We ask that you touch their hearts and allow them to lead with compassion, understanding, and empathy for the citizens of Royal Oak. We pray for their minds, that you will provide wisdom to each of them as they wrestle with the issues that will come before them in this year and ahead. Lord, give each of them the knowledge that will allow them to find just resolutions that are fair and honorable in your sight. We pray for unity among the commission members as they engage in discussions and debate among themselves, that in the end, they will come to the right and just decisions as a unified body that are in the best interest of this community and citizens that they represent. And dear Lord, we pray for their health and for their endurance, that they will have all of the stamina they need to serve this government and to serve in their own endeavors in their private lives. Lord, we also pray for each and every one of their families, for we know that their families give up a little bit of themselves as their loved ones serve the community. Lord, we ask all these things in faith, believing that it's already done, and Lord, we pray also for those emergency responders, our police, our fire department, that you protect them as they do their jobs in this 50th session of this commission. Protect them, keep them safe. In the name of our Lord and Savior, we say, amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Boyd.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to item number four on tonight's agenda, which is public comment. This body, this commission, relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. We ask you to participate in that dialogue by coming to public comment. For public comment, I'll ask that you raise your hands. I'll choose somebody from the audience to come up. Once recognized by me, approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please be mindful that the city commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less, and we do have a timer up here to help you keep track of your time. Please note that the city commission doesn't answer questions directly with public comment or from public comment, however, we are taking notes, and when the subject matter is discussed at tonight's meeting, we'll ask those questions on your behalf. If it's something that isn't on the agenda, our city manager, as well as us, are taking notes, and we'll get an answer to you as well. I do ask that, when you come up here, that comments be directed to the entire commission and not to individual commissioners. So with that, who's first? Ms. Cleveland.
My name is Ruth Cleveland, and I live at 402 North Troy Street. I'm here tonight, though, as the chairperson for the Historic District Study Committee, which has submitted the preliminary report to consider having the farmers' markets designated historic. I wanted to let you know that we have gone as far as the preliminary report, and at this point in time, we have heard from the planning department, and I expect to hear from the state within the next day or two as to any comments that they may have, so that then, on the 19th of December, which is our next meeting, we will put together the various thoughts and submit the final report to the city commission so they can make a decision on it. And that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland.
You're welcome.
And thank you for all your efforts. I know you guys have worked really, really hard on this, and we're very grateful that, you know, you took it to task and have been making excellent progress in lightning-speed time. Very grateful for that.
Well, the wonderful part about it is that we're learning so much of the history of every place that we have studied so far, and we've studied quite a few, as you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir, in the back. Hi, Corey Fields, 422 Austin. To discuss the marijuana zoning, as it currently stands, as I understand it, anyway. I'm a little bit disappointed, actually, in the kind of not-so-much exclusion of the micro-business, but it may as well be excluded. The micro-business license type is a license type that was intended by the state to allow for, excuse me, small businesses to flourish. As the zoning in Royal Oak stands right now, I believe that it's going to be restricted to the Woodward Corridor. In other words, competing against all the big money. And, you know, as a potential small business owner here in Royal Oak, which I'd like to be, I don't have, you know, a million dollars hard cash deposit to compete with those types of businesses that can afford that, so I would like to see the zoning make sense for micro-businesses, to allow for areas where it's not so expensive, the rents and so forth. I really wanna do business here in Royal Oak. I live here, my kids go to school at Northwood, I work here, so I don't wanna take my dream business idea to Berkeley or Ferndale, I wanna do it here. And so, I would love to see the city of Royal Oak be one of the first around here to really embrace the micro-business concept and not just allow the big money to come in and kinda dominate the space, so that's why I'm here. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. I see a hand way in the back.
Thank you. My name is Susan Ward, and I live at 315 East Kennelworth Avenue in Royal Oak. I have been a Royal Oak citizen for over 30 years. I moved here in 1987, and I've been living in the same house. I am here in regard to a home that is in our neighborhood, that has been vacant for well over five years, and for about three years, it has had no siding, up until one day this week, the windows were open, they were exposed to the elements, whatever could go in there, dogs, squirrels. The new owner took over in January of this year, so he took over at a bad time, but now we're here at winter again. This house has no siding. We're looking at the name of the company that provides the insulation, as that's what we look at every day. I passed by there, I've spoken with the mayor through emails, and I've made my complaints to the different boards, but we really need to get this resolved. It's gone on for way too long, and I wanted to bring it before the commission again so that it's not forgotten, because we certainly don't forget it. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
You're welcome.
Yes, Ms. Wagman.
Janice Wagman, Wellesley in Royal Oak. I have several concerns and questions regarding the stormwater utility ordinance that's probably coming to the agenda next month. From the workshop, my understanding was residential improvements such as rain gardens rerouting downspouts and replacing driveways with an expensive pervious surface would have an overall negligible impact on the amount of stormwater going into our systems. Changing a typical driveway to pervious would cost $5,000 or more and take more than 20 years for the homeowner to recapture the cost. Unless we, or the schools, or churches have money to burn, it isn't an encouragement. The workshop documents stated 42% of the residents will see an increase in their total water and sewage charges, some as much as 30%. Low-water users, such as myself and seniors, will see the greatest impact. The current estimate for my property is over 75%, 75% increase. How many low-income seniors will be impacted similarly? As cited in the original document, it is a common practice for builders to grade property to send stormwater onto a neighbor's property, and it should be illegal, not to mention numerous homes, new homes are constructed with the downspouts directed to driveways. What is being done to change these practices? Why are the following counted as impervious? A deck above ground that drains with wood slats that drains into the ground below; a small shed at the back corner of a property that goes nowhere near a sewer. What is the margin of error in your flyover calculations? Mine is at least 20% greater than my actual impervious area. This needs to be investigated and fixed before you pass anything. The city will get an additional $1 million in revenue, of which only $250,000 will go towards new green infrastructure projects. How much of what is currently being spent on water projects from the general fund money will be freed up or shifted for other purposes? There are 14 communities using the Coon Drain, of which only Birmingham has implemented a stormwater utility as part of a legal settlement, in weighing the negligible impact and cost of making improvements to existing homes versus new developments such as Mark Twain and Normandy, along with the numerous apartment and condominium complexes that have been allowed by the city commission. If the goal is to decrease the amount of water going into our sewers, the city should have a greater impact by stopping instead of encouraging high-density developments. Lastly, until a majority of other cities, similar in size to Royal Oak, implement a new ordinance, this would be like banning coal burning in Royal Oak while surrounding cities build cold-fired power plants. We should wait before we start penalizing 42% of Royal Oak residents. Because of all the aforementioned, this isn't ready for primetime. What was supposed to be fair is not fair.
Thank you, Ms. Wagman. Mr. Dumas.
And Roxanne.
Hi, I'm Emily Dumas, I live at 825 West Houstonia.
Roxanne Plater, 1904 Bonneview.
We are here to represent the Royal Oak Public Library. I'm the director, and Roxanne is a trustee with the library board. We are pleased to announce that the Royal Oak Public Library has been certified by the Library of Michigan for meeting the enhanced level of the Quality Service Audit Checklist, or CUSAC for short. Currently, 33 Michigan libraries have certification. Libraries can be certified at the essential, enhanced, or excellent levels, and the certification is for three years. The Royal Oak Public Library is one of only six at the enhanced level, and there are just two at the excellent level. Roxanne's gonna tell you a little bit more about what the CUSAC standards are.
CUSAC is a voluntary management standards program that sets benchmarks for Michigan libraries in seven areas. Governance, administration, and human resources give guidelines for things like staffing, staff and library board development, and community involvement by staff. Services and collection development give guidelines for keeping the collection up to date, ensuring that it's accessible, and ensuring that we are reaching out to all segments of the community. Facilities and equipment, that's what you may think, it sets building size, safety regulations, number of computers, that type of thing. And public relations addresses reaching patrons, collaborating and developing partnerships, and keeping the library visible to the public.
And while Royal Oak Public Library has met these benchmarks, we continue to strive for improvement and innovation, and I wanted to tell you about some of the many ways we are continuing to grow. To make sure we are providing enhanced services, we are focusing efforts on all the schools, Beaumont Hospital, the senior centers, Royal Oak Assisted Living, and other local organizations provide a variety of outreach services. We are starting up an ESL conversation group this winter for participants to practice their English language skills. We also provide a homebound service for delivery to those who can't leave their homes. In the area of collection development, the library continues to exhibit best practices in ordering collection materials, offering a wide range of print books, audiobooks, DVDs, CDs, and also an extensive collection of digital downloadable books, audiobooks, magazines, and streamable movies, music, and TV series. Our OPL also offers non-traditional items for checkout, including seeds for planting from our seed library, and mobile hotspots for Wi-Fi access on the go. Our OPL now offers classes in coding, robotics, and computer skills for seniors, and we have plans in the new year to begin incorporating virtual reality into our programming as well. The library recently underwent a space utilization study to determine ways to rearrange the interior space to better serve our patrons. The intended outcome will be a library that is more comfortable, conducive to today's technology needs with added charging units and tablet stations, and improve areas for both group and individual study. Another major goal is to create a better area for the 50-plus teens who utilize the library after school, as well as an expanded play area for kids. With all that we have accomplished, and all that we hope to still do to serve our community, it is important to remember that the library is dependent on the support from the people of Royal Oak. As giving Tuesday approaches and you receive our appeal letter in the mail or in your email inbox, please keep the library in mind as a place that would greatly appreciate your donation. Thank you, and we hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
And thank you. Wonderful work. Our library continues to excel and be a benchmark, I think, for the entire state of Michigan, if I say so, and just a great place, great place to go. Our kids love it, I think the nine kids among us up here love it. Thank you for all your efforts. Thank you to the board, Roxanne, thank you to you and your team, and thank you, Emily, for you and your team, your efforts. You guys do a great job. All right, who's next? Anybody else want to speak at public comment? I got Mr. Ellison up here.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would normally approach the commission at this juncture in time when you switch from one commission to the next commission. Oh, I should identify myself. State Representative Jim Ellison, proudly representing the cities of Madison Heights and Royal Oak in the 26th district. As I said, I would normally come up here and be saying goodbye to some of you, but none of you are leaving, so I can skip that part, but what I will say is my congratulations to the 49th commission for the work you've done. You've had an incredible amount of challenges in your way, and progress you've made, not without controversy, and I think you've all weathered it well, and we've come out of the 49th session in a very good position so that we can jump back in with the 50th commission starting up tonight. I am gonna deviate from your wish that I don't point out individual commissioners, but I will. Mayor Fornier, congratulations on your election, I was very happy to see it. I think you're doing a wonderful job of leading our city, and don't you dare hammer me down.
I don't take compliments well, Mr. Ellison.
Well, you should learn to do it. Mr. Dubbuck, Ms. Perouse, congratulations again, you do serve the constituency very well. Mr. Levaser, congratulations on your victory. It's no secret that you and I disagree on policy, but I do agree that you probably love this city as much as I do, and I know that everything you do is for the betterment of the community. And I'll offer this to all of you, particularly you, Mr. Levaser, anybody who needs the services of my office in Lansing to cut through red tape to help a constituent to try to get some funding back into projects, my door is always open, and Commissioner Levaser particularly, I think we should sit down, I'd like to talk. After that, congratulations, and carry on.
Just to be fair, you're out of order. You don't know how long I've wanted to do that, Mr. Ellison.
That seems to be a trend for me this year.
All right, I see Mr. Colo with his hand raising high. He's got his phone out, so everyone be prepared. We've got only full three minutes.
Members of the commission, Brandon Colo, 600 East Hudson Avenue. Before I congratulate you, I just wanna mention the library board again, and Emily, our director, they really underplayed how cool this CUSAC rating is, and Roxanne has put a lot of effort into it, so thank you, Roxanne. You really, you've pushed the ball on that. So, like Mr. Ellison, or Representative Ellison, rather, I'd like to congratulate all of you on the 49th commission and all that you accomplish. I'm really excited, over the next year, we've gone from a lot of groundbreakings, and the 50th commission, we'll finally see the ribbon-cuttings. The hard pain we've been through over the last couple of years, well, it's called progress, but it's not always fun. I'm excited that this is the last commission induction here in these chambers. The next one will be in the new city hall. We'll have the new park open soon, so congratulations to all of you. You have a good year here for the next election starts, so hopefully there's a lot of good work that can be done in that time, so congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Colo.
Well, under three minutes.
I know. Mr. Ashley.
My name is Alan Ashley, president of Royal Oak Manor. I wanna congratulate all the ones that got reelected, and I'm gonna say I'm still gonna be hard on all of you, just like I've been. And I hope to let you know that the progress of the refinance and rebuilding the inside and outside of Royal Oak Manor continues. It's on a good pace. Hopefully, with the city's help, we will expand our main street parking. That was, I kinda, my design to get 13 more parking spaces, which we'll duly need for our building, but again, I just wanna say congratulations, and I'm still gonna be hard on all of you when I have to be. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Going once, going twice, Alex.
Good evening, I'm Alex Williams with Mitchum Chapel at 4207 West 14 Mile. I just briefly wanna thank Chief O'Donoghue. We recently had our 33rd anniversary service, and it was an evening service. We have folks who are members of our church and guests of our church who had trouble getting across the street, and the chief made a way for, actually had four officers stationed at the church to help our folks cross the street, away from the crosswalk to shorten their trip, and I just wanna say we really appreciate that. One of our officers asked for that specifically, that I raise it, and I really appreciate that we were accommodated in that way. Stopping traffic on 14 Mile is not popular, I'm sure, but we really appreciate that you made that happen, so thank you very much.
Less popular than bike lanes, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
All right, anybody else? All right, not seeing any hands, I'm gonna close public comment and bring the meeting back up to this side of the table. That brings us to item number five, which is the 49th city commission farewell comments. I'm not aware of anyone wishing to resign tonight. All the incumbents are reelected, but nonetheless, we thought that if there were any comments commissioners wanted to make at this time about the 49th, and maybe reflecting on the work we've done over the last two years, and maybe talk about, you know, briefly about the work we can do in the next two years, the time is here. Anybody wish to speak? Commissioner Macy.
I'd like to cede my time to Jeremy Marley. That's all. That's all I got.
I'm sitting in his old seat, so.
We apologize for that. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I would just like to remind people about the Aging in Place Senior Citizens Task Force that's going forward into the new session. This is a five-year process that is overseen by AARP. There are multiple steps to it. The first step is information gathering, and we're in that process right now, and I want people to know that there will be focus group interviews on Saturday, September 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the senior center. There'll be a light lunch served. This is a process not just for people over the age of 65, but for all people, because we're all planning to be 65 one of these days. It's a process that will help us take a look at all of Royal Oak to find all of the different ways that we can make the city age-friendly, because as we always say, a smooth sidewalk is as essential to someone with a cane or walker as it is to, you know, a parent with a stroller. Starting in early spring, late winter, early spring, we will assemble work groups in several different subject areas, and these work groups will include city staff, interested citizens, and subject matter experts in areas like housing, transportation, communication, social services. And so, you will start to see signup opportunities coming to you over the course of probably the winter, so we're looking for people with expertise, particularly not just from Royal Oak, but people who know these subjects, no matter where they're based. I said earlier, it's a five-year process. Many of the work groups' recommendations will be implemented easily and quickly, but others may affect the way the city chooses to staff and spends money, and so if we need to adjust budgets or adjust staffing, that's something that we have to do within the city budget cycle, so that's why this is a five-year process. You will see results in some areas sooner than that. There's information on the city's website, romi.gov, about the focus groups. Oh, and there's also an online survey in progress, and again, this is for people of all ages. You can take it in about 10 to 15 minutes, and this data will supplement the more qualitative information we're getting from our focus groups.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Thank you for all those kind words about our victory in the shot. Commissioner Douglas? No, that was great information, actually, and on that point, clearly we're all staying up here, I think Mr. Colo's observation is, you know, worth kind of honing in on, which is that it's been a long few years of, you know, meaningful and impactful transition in the city, and, you know, our residents have kept all of us up here to see it through, because none of it is quite done yet. So, the 50th commission will see the completion of the civic center, the completion of Normandy Oaks, the completion of the Aging in Place policy, actual substantive policy changes to make sure that we can meet the needs of our growing senior population, the completion and enactment of an environmental sustainability plan, and continued, hopefully, investment in our parks to see all of our parks get, you know, major upgrades. And, you know, we started all that in the 49th, for the most part, and I'm, you know, proud that, you know, our residents saw that these things are happening and that we need to stay here to see it through. And so, I just wanna say, like, I'm excited to continue to see it through with all you at this table, and to work in earnest to continue to move our community forward, so, yeah, it's been great serving in the 49th, and look forward to the 50th.
Commissioner Dubbuck. Commissioner Perouse.
I don't have a whole lot to add to what Commissioner Dubbuck said. I just want to make sure that the public understands that I am very humbled and honored to have been chosen to serve again. I have a long history in this community, back to the days when our children were babies, and they're not babies anymore, they have babies of their own. But, over the course of that 40-year period, the city has gone through a lot of changes, a lot of changes. Because a city never stops growing, it's just like a child, it just keeps changing. And while you wish, oh, you know, it's three years old, you know, you wish you could keep that age forever, all of a sudden, you know, they're 13 years old and they're taller than you. That's how communities are as well, they keep growing and changing, and it's our job to keep up with it and to make sure that it's still a community that is welcoming and that fits the needs of its citizens, and that it is a happy, healthy place to raise a family, no matter what that family looks like. So again, I just wanna say I am very honored and humbled to have been chosen by the citizens to represent you on the city commission, for the 50th city commission. We have a lot to do, we have a lot going on. I am determined to work very hard to make sure that we continue to make progress and to see where we are at the 51st city commission. So, thank you all very much.
Commissioner Perouse. Anybody else? I'll just add, you know, keying off of maybe what State Representative Jim Ellison had said, you know, we've been up here, some of us, I know Commissioner Perouse has been up here at different intervals throughout her career. Commissioner Dubbuck and I were first elected in 2011, and were sworn in right here that many years ago. Everybody up here has a history, and we've seen the changes, you know, over the years as far as different commissioners coming in to fill these seats, coming and going, different philosophies taking hold, coming and going, different policy debates that had to be had, and over the years, we've just been, you know, moving that needle forward, making our city better and stronger, dealing with the adversity of the Great Recession, dealing with some unimaginable pressures that we've had as a community in southeast Michigan being tied to the auto industry, trying to understand what is our place in this expanding metropolitan area as people are moving farther to the outer ring suburbs into their big drywall homes, what does this mean for Royal Oak, and Birmingham, and Oak Park, and Detroit? And we've managed to, throughout all of those commissions, keep pointing the needle north, and I think we've done an overall pretty successful job, and I think the voters have said, you know what, we're good and happy with the way the direction's going. There's always things we can do different, there's always things we can tweak, but overall, I believe that everyone was put back into this seat to continue moving this city forward, and I'm incredibly proud of this commission, the 49th commission. I'm incredibly honored to be part of it, in that, you know, my neighbors and friends and family... and family put me back at the helm here in the mayor's seat. It's an incredible honor, and it's very humbling. And, you know, we have a sense of duty here, I think, each of us. And just like State Representative Ellison said, we're all here for the right intentions. We all want to see this city thrive. We want to leave it in better shape than we inherited it. And maybe what, like Commissioner Perush said, it's a growing, living thing. We may have checkpoints along the way, like, okay, we've accomplished this, or we've done that, but the race never ends. We have to continue to make sure that we stay on top of our game, because so many people depend on it. So, I'm very grateful to be able to serve with all of you on the 49th. And how lucky are we to get to serve together again on the 50th? So, I guess it's not a farewell, but more of a appreciation. All right. Anybody else? Well, good. Now that agenda item feels like we have accomplished it, awkwardly, because nobody's leaving, but, you know, words worth saying. I'm going to call the adjournment of the 49th City Commission. We're adjourned.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Do we need a motion to do that? We probably need a motion, don't we?
It would be a bad idea.
Just kidding. All right, who wants to move? Commissioner Dubbuck?
I'm moved to adjourn the 49th session of the City Commission.
All right. Second by Commissioner Perush. All right, any discussion?
We don't know.
I'll just add, perfect record up until the last 30 seconds. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. We're adjourned. All right. Don't go anywhere. It's halftime. All right, it's my honor to, I guess I get to open up the convening of the 50th Commission, right?
Correct.
All right. Well, I'm going to call to order the convening of the 50th Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. And we're going to begin this convening with the administration of the Mayor's Oath of Office by the Honorable Derek Meinike. And he's here tonight. I see him there in the black robe. Okay, very good.
Mr. Mayor, if I could jump in and just make a few opening comments?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. Here in Commissioners, I know we've been trading some emails today. I think it's appropriate before we start with the process of the oath, and formally starting business with the 50th Commission, for me to provide a little bit of background information for your benefit and also for the public. The city charter, specifically Chapter 3, Section 39, provides that every officer, meaning every member of the City Commission, before he or she enters upon the duties of his or her office, shall subscribe and file with the clerk an oath of office. And when we say subscribe and file, that means sign and file. When you subscribe to something, that means you're signing something. So, technically, there is no requirement under the city charter that we have a formal swearing-in here in an open ceremony. What's really required is that each of the incoming commissioners and the mayor actually sign an oath that complies with the requirements of the charter and file that with the city clerk's office. Historically, we have had a ceremonial swearing-in. We've been fortunate enough, over the years that I've been sitting at the table as the city attorney, to have our judges come in and do it. Judge Suicki, Judge Bernard of Devon previously, Judge Mann prior to that. We're fortunate enough to have Judge Meinike here tonight to conduct some of the swearing-in. I believe Judge Wittenberg would have been here tonight if he could have been. I spoke with him personally on Friday. I think everyone's aware that he has a very serious health condition. He's waging a fierce battle against a very aggressive form of brain cancer, and he started a new round of treatment last week, and had hoped that he would be able to be here tonight, but honestly, did not think he would not be able to, but he wanted to be here tonight. So, he wanted me to bring that message forward to the City Commission. So, this year, for the first time, to my knowledge anyway, there came to be a disagreement as to what the text of the oath should be that's being administered to the incoming City Commission. For the first time, the question was actually referred to my office. I took up my city manager had put on the city attorney had again, and developed some language that I believe complies with the requirements of the city charter that would be appropriate for the oath of office. And that was provided to all the members of the City Commission. There continued to be a disagreement, not to call them out, but it's going to come out anyway. It was specifically was Commissioner Levaser that disagreed with the language that I had prepared, that I believe complied with the requirements of the city charter. You know, I traded some more emails today, and we still respectfully disagree with each other as to what the language of that oath should be. Having said all that, Judge Meinike is here, and I believe there are at least some members of the commission that would still like to go ahead and proceed with the ceremonial swearing-in tonight. My personal opinion, as manager and the city attorney, I don't know if there's a reason for there to be a ceremonial swearing-in using an oath that differs from what I believe that the charter requires, and what's going to have to be signed and filed with the city clerk. But for those of you that are willing to abide by the language in the oath that I provided, I think you would have the opportunity to go ahead and be sworn in by Judge Meinike tonight. But again, that ultimately is a question for the commission, collectively, as to how you want to proceed. That would be my recommendation. Whether you choose to be sworn in by Judge Meinike or not tonight, my position is that you're still going to have to subscribe and file, that is, to sign and file with the clerk's office. The oath of office that I prepared in compliance with Chapter 3, Section 39 of the charter, in order to be able to assume the position on the 50th City Commission.
All right. Commissioner Macy?
Why are the oaths different? Like, if you made a new oath today, you think complies, why would it be different than the one that they would do with Judge Meinike? Like, couldn't they just do that oath with Judge Meinike?
They would be the same. I believe the judge has been provided the language that I had prepared, so I think they would be the same.
Okay.
So, again, Commissioner Levaser disagrees with me as to what language should be in that oath.
Okay. So, there's one oath to take.
Everyone has to sign the same oath. Some of you are going to say it out loud.
Yes. See where it goes.
Okey-dokey.
I'm a little tired tonight, so I may not say all of it out loud. I'm hoping Judge Meinike doesn't give me, you know, two sentences at a time. Does everyone know Judge Meinike? I think he's one of the most fantastic pillars of this community. We're so blessed to have Judge Meinike, along with Jamie Wittenberg, in our court. He's really done some amazing things since he took over a leadership role. And I'll tell you, it's going to be a great privilege and honor of mine tonight to have Judge Meinike read me my oath as prepared. And I'm the first one, right?
Starting with the administration of the Mayor's Oath of Office. That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Levaser?
Just to clarify, you know, people are wondering, okay, what's the question? We've had a variety of different oaths over the years. Some of them included certain language. They all seem to include some very basic things, such as you're going to support the Constitution of the United States, you're going to support the Constitution of the State of Michigan. We've also had previous oaths that provide that you're going to support the charter and ordinances of the city of Royal Oak. It's that language that's been removed that I think is extremely important, is important to me to keep in the oath, and that's what we're disagreeing on. The proposed language that's presented to, the judge deletes that language about supporting the charter and the ordinances of the city of Royal Oak. I want to keep that in for my oath.
Commissioner Perush?
It's my understanding, based on looking at the historic records of the oath that people have taken over the years, the oath that Commissioner, or that City Attorney Gillum is recommending was used consistently up until 2007, and then for some reason, it changed. We don't know why it changed. There aren't any records in the City Commission. There aren't any memoranda. There aren't any memoranda in the city attorney's office. All of a sudden, the language changed in 2007. What City Attorney Gillum is recommending is that we go back to the language that was used by the city ever since its inception, up until 2007, and when it was changed for whatever reason. The language includes, language that says that the City Commission and the mayor have to abide by the duties of their office, and to me, that includes obeying the city charter and obeying city ordinances. It's comprehensive. Your obligation to obey the charter and the ordinances is already inherent in the language that is there. So, I'm comfortable using the oath that was originally put in the charter, that was used up until 2007, and that we're going back to, because I think it's comprehensive and appropriate.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Well, I have no strong feelings about this. I think our obligation under the law is the same regardless of the specific verbiage that's here. So, this is, you know, word smithing of the oath is not really a helpful exercise, but my kids are definitely starting to get antsy. So, sooner we, you know, take the oath and get to the business of 50th Commission, that would be great.
Commissioner Macy?
So, I just want to clarify. So, Commissioner Levaser said this used to be in the oath, and you're saying it didn't used to be in the oath?
In terms of the city records that I have seen, I was looking at records from the early '60s, '61, '62, whenever that commission was. And it's the same language that Commissioner, that City Attorney Gillum is recommending, which is the language that's in the charter.
So, it was used in '61, and it was used in 2006, and then in 2007, it changed?
Yeah.
And now, we're going back to the one you saw in '61 and '20?
Yeah.
So, where did you see this one?
Oh, I've seen this the last several years. I've seen several with some variations that talk about this, but they all, in the most recent years, except for two years ago, had language saying that we're going to support the charter and ordinances of the city of Royal Oak.
I feel confused.
Mr. Gillum?
Just wanted to add a couple of comments. The language that I prepared after this question was brought to my attention was based upon what I saw in the city charter. And again, my opinion is that the oath that I prepared fully complies with the language of the city charter. After I had prepared that language, then Ms. Hallis and her office did their historical research. And that's when she determined that historically, and as Commissioner Perush had indicated, going back to, let's see, as far back as, oh, prior to 2005, I think even going back to the days of Jim Klein and Peggy Lewis, when they were the mayors for the city of Royal Oak, if I remember right. But essentially, the language that I prepared was the language that was used at that point in time. But as Commissioner Perush had indicated, for some reason, in roughly 2007, the oath that was applied had changed. And that oath was used in some form or another up until, again, according to Ms. Hallis's research, until 2013. And then 2013 to the present, then the commission has been using essentially the same language that I am proposing now, which, again, I believe complies with the charter, and, as we learned later, historically complies with what the city has done.
I represent the City Commission on the Charter Review Board, and there are many places in the city's charter which violate state laws. These are provisions that were written many, many years ago, and since then, state law has changed. And so, the, this commission, well, first of all, the Charter Review Committee regularly submits changes, hoping to update our charter, because it must be done through a public election. And that's been successful over the years, but there are still issues that the Charter Board needs to consider. And so, yes, commissioners must follow the duties of their office, but swearing an oath to uphold the charter and the Constitution of the State of Michigan potentially puts commissioners at odds with each other, because the state law has invalidated that element of the charter.
I'll just state, I have the full trust, I guess it would be City Attorney Gillum in this particular circumstance, although he wears two hats. And, you know, I don't want to risk being in noncompliance with the charter by modifying the language that you put together, which puts us in compliance with the charter, with state law, and with the, you know, actions and duties that we must endure as commissioners and mayor. So, notwithstanding any further comment, I'm ready to take my oath of office, and I believe what Mr. Gillum has prepared is right and just and good, and, you know, compliant with the charter. So, I'm going to go be compliant with the charter and take my oath. Okay, good. All right. And if I could ask my home staff to join me? Who wants to hold the Bible for me? You guys want to come over here, maybe?
Sure.
All right. Left hand, seriously. Left hand. There we go. I got to raise my right hand, because it's all awkward. It's fine. It's fine. Actually, this stage is real. It was awkward from when the agenda item came up.
This is who's stage managing this?
It all worked together, just in the last moment. All right, Mayor, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Michigan. And the Constitution of the State of Michigan. And I will faithfully perform. And I will faithfully perform. The duties of the office. The duties of the office. Of the mayor. Of the mayor. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you. I'm just signing up. Thank you again, Mayor, for your kind words. I really appreciate the relationship between the court and the 49th session. I'm looking forward to continued cooperation between our two bodies going into the 50th session. I love the fact that you're always just a phone call away, and if there's ever any questions or concerns between our two separate branches, they are easily, easily taken care of in a swift fashion because of your accessibility. Thank you. Well, the feelings are mutual, Judge Meinike. Thank you. Thank you. I think Commissioner Perush is next.
This is my husband, Dave.
All right. This is a true honor. Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Commissioner.
Of City Commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Mr. Dubbuck?
I have to sign, Dave. You have to sign, Pat.
You got to sign.
I have to sign. Well, he can keep walking.
You have to. What's the worst?
Subscribe.
Subscribe. You have to subscribe.
It's not fancy, but it works. True story, actually, Commissioner Dubbuck is probably the commissioner that I've known the longest.
True?
When we first met, he was fresh out of college, and I was a young prosecutor at the time.
Recording device is on. Please continue the story.
True story. But the nice thing about it is that we met outside of a courtroom setting. But at that time, with all the idealistic, hopeful, you know, attitude and belief, he talked about how he wanted to serve. And I said, me too, you know? We've gotten much more eloquent over the years. Sorry, I did a much better job with that, but it's, I find it ironic that these many years later, we're still having the opportunity to serve this great community. Can you guys hold that for me? It's pretty heavy. I'll drop it, Jackson. You got it. All right, please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Michigan. And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city commissioner.
Of city commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And I'm here just to, as it was so nicely put, and I don't think intentionally cutting it all, I am a glorified decoration here today, all right? I'm not actually required to be here. The city manager slash city attorney Gillum is correct that it doesn't actually have to be sworn, but it sure is nice, isn't it? It's very nice to be a part of this. These are one of those ceremonies. I have to make a bunch of tough decisions every day. This is one of the easier things that I get to do. But I absolutely do not want to get into any sort of disagreement. So, you know, Commissioner Levaser, if you have any disagreement with any of this, I was just giving some oaths and...
I appreciate that. If you're not comfortable, I brought up the oath with the added language. If you're not comfortable reading it for me, I won't ask you to do that.
Again, I just, I'm looking for a little bit of guidance as to what the board would like, what the commission would like me to do. I am at your disposal.
Commissioner Perush?
Because the city attorney Gillum indicated that what is legally required is the signing of that piece of paper, which has the language in it from the charter, I don't think it's necessarily incumbent upon us to demand that that same language be in the oath, since the oath effectively is pretty much just ceremonial. So as far as I'm concerned, Commissioner Levaser is more comfortable with a different language in the oath. And using that tonight, to me, doesn't make any difference.
Thank you.
As long as you sign it's that.
As long as, as long as what is signed is what is required by the charter.
Commissioner Macy?
So I just want to add, I agree with what Commissioner Perush said, except I think that there would be some limit to this. Like, if he wrote some huge, long document that was strange and maybe he said some things that we didn't want said here in the chambers, we wouldn't allow that, right?
I think there's literally another sentence.
Right. So I feel fine with what he's, what he's proposing tonight. I'm just putting out there that I think this is a strange exception.
Well, yes, absolutely. I mean, we can all use our wild imaginations to think of some creative oaths that some people might, you know, want to suggest at some point in time. But I don't think that's what Commissioner Levaser is suggesting.
And frankly, if it's any concern, if it had that sort of language, I wouldn't read it.
Well, I guess that's true.
Then they'd just be stuck with whatever they subscribe to. So, all right.
I'm looking to see if Chance White is still in the room.
No, she has.
Now, would you like to assist me?
Yeah, I'll just add, before we do the oath, I mean, you know, at the end of it, it's what we sign and what we subscribe to. You know, we got to put our trust in the city attorney. They're not wedding vows. We don't necessarily always get the chance to write, you know, what our oaths are. But if the commission doesn't have an issue at large with an extra sentence. But I don't want it to anyway be a reflection on somehow that the rest of the commissioners that have taken their oaths from, you know, decades ago to today are not in any way upholding the charter and one particular individual is. That should not be construed that way at all. In fact, you know, it's, you know, in my opinion, a bit of a stretch as it is today. But if nobody has any objections, I won't take any, and I'll stand down and allow it to proceed. Okay. All right. Is there a right hand? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Royal Oak.
And the charter and the ordinances of the city of Royal Oak.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city commissioner.
Of city commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is that my pen?
My valuable pen.
From my institution? Just let me borrow one.
Yeah, sure.
It looks like my pen. Would you like to use my pen? Do you need it?
Actually, I do need it.
Here. I'm not going to write anymore.
Yep. It's a USB drive, not a pen. Thank you. Should we break the ice at all with a funny story about swearing ins? Everyone want to break the ice? Get rid of the tension?
No.
Because I think Mayor Ellis, former Mayor Ellison, has a funny story that I think would help navigate us past this awkward moment into the next part of our business.
Thank you, Mayor Fournier. As I was listening to the discussion here about the swearing in, and many times that I was sworn in as commissioner and mayor, I don't think I've said the same oath twice. But I do remember one in particular, where Judge Sewicki was doing a swearing in. And in the middle of all those words, he said, "He made me promise to obey my wife." I kind of looked at him. He says, "You can't do that." And so, over a whole year, you know, I obeyed my wife. And now I know it wasn't fallid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison. And thank you, Judge Minneke, for, you know, being with us here tonight. It's just one of your many duties, and we're very grateful that you're here tonight. And Reverend Boyd, also thank you for making it out tonight. I know you're a very busy person as well. And to have you guys here and celebrate the, you know, commencing of the Royal Oak 50th City Commission is important, and we're very grateful for your participation tonight. How about a round for these two? Just thank you again for the invitation. These events are just a wonderful reminder of the community that we have, in that, I mean, I look at you, Mayor, and Commissioner DeBuck, we, you know, we're all, we're all young kids, and we're working together here. Commissioner Perush is, and I have been good friends for a very, very long time. And it's a reminder that we all inhabit the same community. Take away our titles, and we're all still Royal Oak residents. And that's probably the greatest title that we have. So thank you again for your willingness to serve, each of you, because that's, I mean, nobody, nobody's getting rich on the amount of service that you are providing here. This is all about, frankly, just your willingness, each and every one of you, to commit time and energy to make this city great. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, Judge Minneke.
All right. That brings us to number eight on our agenda, which is the call to order of the Royal Oak 50th City Commission to order. And right straight to business, we're going to begin with the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Perush?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, second by Commissioner DeBuck. Discussion? All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. All right. The 50th Commission is unanimous so far. All right. One and O.
Don't get used to it.
I just hope when we go two and O. Consent agenda. Anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda this evening and talk about it separately? Commissioner Douglas?
Bill, approval of the consent agenda?
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, supported by Commissioner DeBuck. Discussion on the consent agenda? All right, with none. All the consent agenda now consists of the city commission meeting minutes from November 11th, claims November 19th and the 22nd, approval of purchase orders, receiving file non-action items, October 2019 Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority and the October 2019 Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority Quarterly Report. A call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. All right. This brings us to item number 11, which are organizational issues. Item A is the approval of the 2020 city commission schedule. And I believe it's Mr. Gillum.
Mayor and city commissioners, you have a proposed meeting schedule in front of you. Generally speaking, consistent with prior years, we're proposing to meet on the second and fourth Monday of each month. We found that historically, when we met on the first and third Mondays, that we ran into a lot of meeting conflicts. So the two months that are different in terms of the second and fourth Monday schedule would be the month of March. Because of the fact there's an election in, in March, we normally would be meeting on the 9th, but instead, we're proposing to move that meeting back to the 16th. The second meeting date is listed here as March 23rd. One option I would throw out to the commission, if you're interested, is, I looked at the calendar, March actually has five Mondays this coming year. And in addition to that, our first meeting in April wouldn't be until Monday, April 13th. So I would throw out as an option, instead of doing the March 16th and March 23rd, the back-to-back meetings. Keeping in mind that the back-to-back meetings in terms of turnaround for staff time and getting things ready, the second meeting is normally not very productive when we go back-to-back. So one suggestion might be to consider March 16th and March 30th, which would give us two weeks between those meetings, but then in addition, give us two weeks before our first meeting in April as well, which would be on March 13th. So that's one possibility. Another change that we're recommending is in the month of May, because of the Memorial Day holiday, on May 25th, we're proposing to meet on Monday, May 11th, and again, on Monday, May 18th. And then finally, looking at the notation, the recommendation for December, again, the second and fourth would be, Mondays would be the 14th and 28th of December. Again, having just spoken against back-to-back meetings, I'm not sure that meeting the week following Christmas would be very productive either. So what I'm suggesting is, in terms of December, that we consider meeting on December 14th and then December 21st. So again, the schedule as recommended, but again, consider meeting on Monday, March 30th rather than the 23rd, and then Monday, December 21st rather than December 28th.
Commissioner Macy?
What if, what if in December, we did the 7th and the 21st? Because our November one, the second one's on the 23rd. So then we would have 30th off, then 7th on, 14th off, 21st on.
I like that.
Could make that work?
Can we do that in, I guess we can't do that in March either, can we?
I didn't look, actually.
No, because March, we have a presidential primary election.
The 10th, right? But the first meeting, and I guess that'd be back-to-back, wouldn't it? Yeah, because there's...
Yeah.
If we went to the second, yeah.
Because February is short, yeah.
Yeah, that would be back-to-back.
Look forward to the emails from Commissioner Levaser with these changes.
Commissioner Levaser, do you understand what you did earlier today?
He does know.
Let just be known that I'm not really technologically advanced. So as I was putting the dates of the next year's meeting on my calendar, it was alerting everyone in the room who's tied to the same calendar event that I was doing that. So they only got about 50 messages that I was putting in. So I'm like...
Thank you for the invite. I'll accept. I'll participate. Thank you for making those meetings possible, Commissioner Levaser. I thought the city was on fire. I'm like, what is going on with my phone?
Me too.
Okay, so we have some proposed dates here. We've had some recommendations by Mr. Gillum. We actually have a recommendation by Commissioner Macy that I think might actually work a little bit better for December. Suggestions, discussion, Commissioner Perush?
Could you explain again the December that you're recommending?
So we have it listed here, 1428. I'm recommending we exactly flip that and make it 7 and 21. The reason, so the 7th, there would still be, it wouldn't be two back-to-back because November, it's the 23rd. One week later is the 30th, there's a break. And then the next week would be the 7th. So it'd be the 1st and 3rd in December instead of the 2nd and 4th.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, I think, works better. If the schools are off the whole week between Christmas and New Year's, we wouldn't then have a commission meeting in the middle of it. So if you're off to the beach somewhere, or skiing, or just cleaning out your basement that week, you know, you don't have to worry about coming to a commission meeting.
Right.
So...
Yep.
So we're looking for a motion here?
Yeah.
We're looking for a motion.
For the calendar with Commissioner Macy's suggestion and Mr. Gillum's suggestion? Mr. Gillum's suggestion in March and Commissioner Macy's suggestion for December?
Yes.
Okay.
For the record, could you just clarify those?
Yeah. So the motion would be that in March, we would meet on March 16th and March 30th. And then in December, we would meet on December 7th and December 21st.
That's my motion.
It's his motion. Is there a second to that?
Support.
Second by Commissioner Levaser. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, we got meetings. That brings us to item B, which is the adoption of rules of procedure. Mr. Gillum?
Mayor and city commissioners, the city charter, our old friend, requires that the city commission adapt rules to govern its meetings. And what we're proposing is that the commission adapt essentially the same rules that are in place right now, along with the rules of procedure for public participation as well.
Commissioner Douglas?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? Commissioner Levaser?
I have a couple of concerns here. Number one, this continues what I consider to be a very bad decision by the 49th, which was to change what had been a long existing policy to allow any two commissioners to put something on the formal agenda. That was clearly adopted two years ago for the purpose of making it much more difficult for commissioners, Gibbs, and myself to put things on the agenda. It creates a, you know, there's a couple of different concerns. First, it creates a problem with the Open Meetings Act, where you essentially have to dare yourself to violate that state law, looking for that third person to support something on the, on the agenda. Basically, it allows you to go to one person. If that person says no, then you got a problem going to a fourth person, because then you'd be arguably violating the state's Open Meetings Act. And this was an issue that our parliamentarian advisor expressed some concern about when she came to see us two years ago. So that's one concern. The other, it's kind of a nonsense thing to have a prohibition in here of people clapping and cheering, public comment. That's a First Amendment thing. I don't know that we can make rules that take away people's First Amendment rights. So I've got concerns with these rules. I'm not going to support them as is.
Just to offer up a couple of clarifications, you know, there's a, I'll just say accusation casted that this all began, this discussion about going from three to two began on the election of two individuals. That is not true. This is actually something that the 48th Commission had discussed before and were actually, had some inquiries into staff, if I'm not mistaken, because we were getting commissioners, all with good intentions, you know, throwing staff up and down, left and right, every week. And part of good governance is getting consensus, is reaching out to your colleagues. Yes, it's important that we follow the Michigan Open Meetings Act and that the public understands what we're discussing and the decisions that we're making. But quite honestly, you know, good government also, you know, when I have an idea, and I know Commissioner Macy's an expert in it, I give her a call. And I know it's something related to planning or whatever, I give Commissioner Douglas a call. I want to understand, you know, if I have an idea, is it worth bringing to the table? Is it worth bringing to the commission? And it allows me to vet these ideas, but it also, you know, makes sure that there's some consistency that folks actually want to talk about the item and that we don't bog down our business meeting here at the commission for political or campaign purposes. So I think it's a good rule. I think it's made staff more efficient. It's made our meetings more efficient. We talk about things that are more productive. And at any rate, at any given time, things can be brought to the table, you know, at the meeting and added to the agenda for the vote of the commission. So there's so many stopgaps here. But I just want to clarify, you know, any dispersions that are being propagated that, you know, this is something that started with two commissioners. That's, that's not entirely true. And I know that because I've had these discussions with our former city commissioner prior. Not a knock against, I won't call out any other former city commissioner from the 48th, but, you know, we wanted to make things a little bit more efficient. So, you know, as far as the clapping and disruptions that we have, this is a business meeting. This is the people's meeting. This is a business meeting. If you're watching the impeachment trials, people are expected to follow, you know, business rules and decorum. It's not out of respect for this commission, but it's out of respect for the people that call this community home. It's out of respect for the people that voted and elected us to put in office to conduct city business. It's out of respect for our fellow neighbors who may come up and have an opposing opinion and don't want to feel bullied or intimidated. And, you know, I think that you can talk about freedom of speech, but when we start to... And so, I don't want to infringe on anybody's willingness or desire to speak. We have a lot of things here and people have good comments to make, pro and con on any issue, and I can't stand for, you know, meetings being disruptive and nonproductive. And this is actually something that's been in place up until recently, where we've had a lot of issues, where even former Mayor Ellison, from time to time, had to call to order because of some clapping things we get under control. But this is not something that's a freedom of speech issue, it's a respect for others issue. Mr. Dubbuck?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just emphasize that as far as Commissioners having the ability to add items to the agenda, according to Robert's Rules, anyone can move to add something to the agenda at the beginning of any meeting when we're setting the agenda with a majority vote of the Commission. So, if it is something worthy of consideration, that'll be there. As far as, you know, trying to get three folks on board, that doesn't mean you have to deliberate toward a conclusion or that the Commissioners you're approaching are going to have to agree with you, just that they believe it's worthy of discussion and staff should be prepared to have that discussion. So, to date, you know, Commissioner LaVassar has never reached out to me ever to ask if I would support adding something to the agenda, nor has Commissioner Gibbs, but I would always be happy to consider anything that's an item that we think is worthwhile for the business of the city. So, that pathway remains open, as does Robert's Rules at the beginning of every meeting.
All right. Did we get a motion on this?
Yep.
We did. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Show a hand of the nays. Okay. Well, it's a majority enough to have some rules. All right. Next is item C, which is the appointment of the Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Douglas?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Pat Perusch as Mayor Pro Tem.
Commissioner Mason?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Douglas?
She brings immense value to this body, her desire to come back and serve in a volunteer capacity and then extend her term because she became so much more re-engaged in what we're doing here. The wisdom she brings to this and her vote-getting status in the recent election more than qualify her.
Commissioner Mason?
I will summarize that briefly. She is the best of us.
Commissioner Perusch?
As she knocks over her water, thank you very much. I've been Mayor Pro Tem a long time ago. It was a very rewarding experience and I'd be pleased and honored to do it again.
Any other discussion? I'll just add, you know, Commissioner Douglas, you did a fantastic job over the last couple of years, filling in. I've had some health issues, I've had kid issues, I've had a number of things. All the things that you're involved in, from being the former President of the Michigan Planning Association, to your involvement still with that organization today, the effort and work you're doing on SEMCOG, I think you've represented this city in every capacity very well over your service here, but also as Mayor Pro Tem over the last couple of years. And I think we're all incredibly grateful for you stepping up and taking extra time out of your schedule to perform the duties like you did for the 49th. So, thank you very much. Commissioner Perusch? I don't know if I even have the ability to express in words how grateful, you know, we are to have you on this Commission, the expertise and leadership and experience and integrity that you bring to this Commission. I look forward to your service as Mayor Pro Tem. And in a lot of ways, I'm very grateful to have your experience being former Mayor and now being Mayor Pro Tem and former Mayor Pro Tem, that I can come to you with a whole myriad of issues and you can give me guidance and sometimes correction on what I need to do, and it's been invaluable. So, I'm very grateful.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. We have a new Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Perusch? Let's give a hand to Commissioner Douglas for her service. That brings us to item D, which is the approval of the performance bond.
Mayor Fournier and City Commissioners, again, this is another requirement of the Charter that the Officers of the City Commission are required to give a bond for faithful performance before the time that they take office. The bond itself comes through our self-insurance pool, the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. But again, to comply with Charter, we're recommending approval of the proposed resolution.
Questions for Mr. Guillam.
Move approval?
We have a motion by Commissioner Mason. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to, pardon me, a little under the weather today, item 12, which is the Merrell City Commission Assignments. So, we have a number of, for those of you who might not be aware, especially those high school students that are here today in observance, we have a number of committees and commissions that go beyond this Commission here that help make recommendations to the city, that help govern certain aspects of the city, from your planning commission to your zoning board, to, you know, the Environmental Advisory Committee. And these are typically groups of community volunteers that come together and study issues and make recommendations so that we can make more informed decisions here that, you know, help our city progress. A number of those committees have Commission representatives and the Mayor makes recommendations for these appointments to the Commission. Given the fact that, you know, the voters spoke loud and clear by putting all the incumbents back in office, that, you know, they're very pleased with the status quo and like the direction and service we're providing, I elected to keep pretty much every, all the assignments the same. So, I'll leave it up to my fellow Commissioners to, you know, add their commentary and/or approval of my recommendations. Commissioner Dubbuck?
Move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is that seconded by Commissioner Gibbs?
I just had a question if the Norman Yoke Task Force was actually still necessary.
You never know.
We could talk about that after. I mean, we can always retire it, but you're right, it's coming closer to an end.
Okay.
Crossing our fingers, coming closer to it. We don't know how the spring's going to go with construction. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mason?
No, so a question.
Second, then question?
Second and a question.
Okay. Commissioner Mason?
So, I'm on the Library Board and my term is going to be up this December. Do you reappoint me here? So, just as a regular Lib... Okay.
You're on my list. I got it in the maybe pile right now.
I'm sure they'd approve.
You know, if you drop my kids off a couple more times to school at 7:00 in the morning, you know, maybe, no...
There were takes.
No, that should be, those appointments, again, because it's a weird situation with you, those will be coming up probably the December 9th meeting. We have some on planning, we have some on the Arts Commission, and we have the Library Board appointments as well.
That's the schedule right now. We're shooting for the 9th.
Shooting for the 9th, but, you know, you can pick somebody, they can decide to bail and, you know, things happen, but, you know, that's the plan. Any other discussion? Commissioner LaVassar?
This is something, if you look at the Appointments Ordinance, it does not provide for the Mayor to make recommendations or appointments to these various committees. If anything, it calls for the Appointments Committee itself, which is a rotating committee of three members of the City Commission. I believe that that would have been a better way to approach this, where that committee could have received feedback from each of the members of this body as to what their preferences are, what their priorities are, and considered that in an open meeting and made their recommendations to this committee. That didn't happen. Instead, the Mayor is making his recommendations, perhaps with some consultation of various members of the SPY, perhaps without. But it's in a manner which I don't believe is consistent with the Appointments Committee, pardon me, the Appointments Ordinance. The other aspect that I have a concern with, and this is not a personal statement, but Commissioner Douglas and I have different perspectives when it comes to planning, and she's been on that Plan Commission for a very long time. I do believe it's time that another Commissioner serve in that role. And I just can't support it because I don't believe that Commissioner Douglas would approach